And gentlemen, I welcome you to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting this evening. And what we're starting with this evening is the Tax Increment Financing District Public Hearing. I call this meeting to order and ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's.
Here.
Camer.
Here.
Carbonell.
Here.
Danny.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. I believe, trustee Camer, are you going to recuse?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself, but I will be sitting in the audience.
Okay.
Let me explain, the TIF Act provides that if any member of the corporate authorities owns directly or indirectly an interest in real estate in the proposed redevelopment area, that that would create a conflict of interest and that they would have to step down and cannot participate in the public hearing or in the process, cannot deliberate, cannot vote, and cannot communicate with members of the board with respect to the TIF. So, that is why. And disclosure document was asked of all the trustees, and before the board passed a resolution setting this public hearing, trustee Camer brought the issue up, did not vote on that resolution setting the public hearing. We looked into the matter further with Chapman and Cutler, Bond Council, and they concurred that that would be disqualifying interest. He simply has a practice as a chiropractor and rents space within the Gorski Shopping Center, Bartlett Plaza, and has apparently for years, and that was enough of an indirect interest that would disqualify.
And that being said, before I turn it over to staff for an explanation, we'll attempt, make every attempt to hear everybody's comments regarding the TIF. If it does run along to a point where we think that we're going to be unable to finish our regularly scheduled board meeting, we'll be calling another date, just so you know. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is the required public hearing for the tax, proposed tax increment financing district. This public hearing notice was duly published in a newspaper of general circulation, twice as required under the TIF Act. The newspaper's certification of publication we have on file. And this is a, as stated, required public hearing. And without further ado, we have our TIF consultants, Bob Reschlikie and Charles Durham from Kane McKenna. They will give a brief overview slideshow of the proposed TIF district, and then we'll open it for public comments from the audience.
Very good.
So without further ado, Bob Reschlikie from Kane McKenna.
Thank you, Jim. Members of the board, Mayor. What we'd like to do is go over some of the same material that we did for the taxing districts at the Joint Review Board, which was previously held in this, in these chambers. And we'll go over, again, a summary of the information that has been available at the village offices for some time and had been sent, again, to the taxing districts. And, again, it's somewhat voluminous, but we're going to hit some of the high points as it relates to the plan as well as the eligibility factors. Our presentation basically is going to go into three parts. First, we'll give a little background on the proposed TIF district and village plans for the area, both past and current, identifying the factors that qualify the area under state law as a TIF district in order for the village to make that designation. And lastly, we'll identify some of the key elements of the TIF plan. Again, from a standpoint in terms of, not only for the Village of Bartlett, but again for many other communities, downtown areas are historic or strategically important areas for the center of the town, center of community life. And from a standpoint of redevelopment as well as maintaining values, maintaining vibrancy within the area, redevelopment opportunities or constant monitoring of the area to see if it's consistent with both the village vision as well as the community's vision for the area has led, again, not only the village but many other communities to consider TIF as an option to help coordinate redevelopment. Again, it's no substitute for the private investment. It's basically another means of assistance in addition to your entitlement programs or other planning programs that you have for the area in order to, again, coordinate or marshal investment, in order to meet certain village goals or redevelopment objectives. The area in question is identified, pursuant to the TIF Act, you do have to have a geographic area identified, both by map as well as by legal description, and the area is identified on the map on the slide, and is also included in all the notices as well as the materials available at Village Hall. Again, it's roughly bounded by North Avenue on the north and Onita, then kind of juts out westward to a south, to Western Avenue, down south to Devon, and then to the east at Prospect, although it does include some properties that are east of Prospect. TIF is important because it allows the village to coordinate, as I said, resources over the period of the TIF district. Any incremental revenues that are generated are available within the boundaries of that map that we saw in order to assist redevelopment or provide for public improvements that are needed in order to guide redevelopment within the area. And, again, over the course of the last few years, we've seen the impacts of the economic downturn and what that's done for both property valuations as well as lags or delays in investment opportunities. From the standpoint of the village's, in our compilation of the TIF plan, it does comply with the legal requirements as it relates to the conformance with the comprehensive plan, as to its minimum size, and as well as to the but-for finding. From the standpoint of TIF, it's important to distinguish it from other programs, let's say as a special service area or special assessment, which are really additional taxes or new taxes that are levied on properties for redevelopment. It is not the case with TIF. TIF basically, under Illinois law, property continues to be uniformly assessed whether you're in or outside of the TIF district. The tax rate or taxes extended, again, are uniform as it relates to the rate both within and without the TIF district. What happens is, is after taxes are extended, if there's an increase in value over what they call the base, there's a split in the distribution of the revenues by the county. So the bucket on the left side would basically be the base taxes or the taxes that the districts continue to enjoy prior to the TIF's designation. The bucket on the right would be any new taxes, incremental taxes due to their increases in value, primarily increases in value, that occur subsequent to the designation of the TIF and are in place for 23 years, which is the maximum allocation allowed for the TIF Key for TIF in terms of utilization by municipalities is that blue line which corresponds to the equalized assessed valuation. That's really the building block of TIF districts in Illinois and the way the law is structured. As value increases, and the idea is the value increased primarily due to the efforts of the municipality, whether it's through their entitlement program or utilization of TIF revenues, is that blue line goes up and taxes that are attached to that increase in valuation are realized, they go into the TIF fund, which, again, for that geographic area only and primarily capital improvements, have to be spent within that area in order to further the objectives of the TIF. Again, from the standpoint of the way the mechanics of the TIF Act and the mechanics of the TIF district, the valuation and the continued increase is important. I mean, what we've seen actually, there's been a reversal of that line over the last six or seven years, unfortunately, and the feeling is that we're at a point now, as the economy is starting to stabilize and real estate values are starting to stabilize as well, that we're at a point where we can guide that line to go further up and allow for increment to be generated. In order to set up the TIF district, that geographic area that you saw on that map, there has to be findings made by the municipality, which Kane McKenna has assisted, in order to, the village to make those findings. In order for an area to qualify as a TIF, you have to demonstrate that it's either a conservation area or a blighted area. In this case, we've made a determination that the area is a conservation area, as primarily due to the age of the structures. Fifty percent or more of the structures have to be 35 years old or greater. Based upon our review of the area in terms of its characteristics, that was the natural way to go as it related to the qualification of the TIF district. In addition to that threshold factor, then there's a requirement that, there's 13 factors in the TIF Act. You have to meet qualification by having at least three of those factors present. We've identified that there, in consultation with staff, we've actually identified that six of those factors were present in the area. Those that are 13 factors set forth in the Act, we've identified obsolescence, deterioration, excessive vacancies, inadequate utilities, lack of community planning, and lagging or declining equalized assessed valuation. And, again, that relates to the valuation as determined by the county assessor. From the standpoint of excessive vacancies, we looked at not only properties that were vacant, but also the duration, duration of the vacancy, where their location was, and identified that as a factor that was prevalent within the area. For the lagging and declining EAV, the TIF Act actually offers you three different ways to qualify. You only have to meet one of the three. So unfortunately, in this case, part of, I think, to the age of some of the structures, the fact that there was a predominance, a commercial, we actually found that all three of those factors were present. That is, a decline for three or more years, lag behind the rest of the village equalized assessed valuation, and lag behind the CPI for three of the five years. So, again, we had the trifecta, so to speak, as it related to this factor. Deterioration was also found to be present, and we had looked at every property within the TIF. You know, we were assisted by staff in some cases, but mainly it was Kane McKenna who walked the area and undertook both photographic and site surveys for all the properties, and we found, again, in most cases it was site improvements, but in other cases, certain building components were also identified. Obsolescence is really a combination of some things, in which you can piggyback on some of the other factors that are present. For example, the definition under the TIF Act is its properties falling into disuse, or properties not used for the initial use for which they were intended. We've seen some conversions in the area, primarily along Oak, near North Avenue. Also, in some cases, buildings falling into disuse in terms of some of the commercial structures that were present in the area. And we also looked at the evaluation and the buff cards or cards in terms of building conditions that were identified for us from the county assessor's office. Lack of community planning in this case, again, the village has planned within this area, the village has undertaken ongoing efforts in order to plan for this area. But this factor really goes to is the genesis and when the area developed. And based on the age of the buildings, again, a majority, most of the area really reflects planning principles from an era before you put in place your comprehensive plan and before modern practices as relating to setbacks, loading and unloading for trucks, and basically size of the buildings as they relate to the lots on which they're located. Final factor had to do with inadequate utilities, and here we, again, we worked with village staff identifying, again, the age of some of the utilities and the history of main breaks, history of repair in the area. And, again, based on the age and based on the condition, the finding was made as it related to the inadequate utilities within the area. So to summarize, again, in order to qualify as a conservation area, age is the factor. And, again, these are set forth in a TIF Act, 50% or more of buildings basically have to be 35 years old or older, we found that in terms of examination of both county and village data relating to the age of the structures. And then out of 13 factors, a minimum of three are required. We identified six. TIF plan, and, again, I think we might have mentioned this to the board, we were here early on, it's not a plan as it relates to what you may associate with a plan in terms of the pictures, the kind of area redevelopment options. TIF plan is primarily a financing plan. There are certain requirements that we have to identify as to general land use, land uses which are set forth under the TIF Act. But from the standpoint of how this plan looks, it's not going to look like your conventional plan. We do conform to the requirements of the TIF Act, which identify in terms of geographic area, legal description, set forth goals and objectives, set forth a budget, projected values, plan completion of the community's redevelopment efforts. But the plan, again, it's more of a financing tool. It conforms with state requirements as it relates to what are the key provisions that we have to have and we have in the plan. And, again, is primarily meant to assist you or complement your entitlement in your planning processes as you normally would undertake. Based upon the information that we had available from the county, we identified the base, and remember, that's that straight line from those charts, a little over $18.5 million that was based upon the, again, Cook County Assessor data and Clerk's data. We projected, and, again, they're just projections, they're really dependent upon the market, growth rates, again, a return maybe to more robust growth rates than what we've seen in the last few years. Projected EAV is $30 million to $35 million. Obviously, that could change, hopefully upwards, but, again, we made it more of a conservative projection as it related to the plan. The TIF budget, important point for everyone to understand is, it's not a one-year thing, it's not a five-year thing, it's over a 23-year period. That's an amount that we've identified for the other taxing districts in terms of how we'd utilize monies and to what extent we would utilize monies over that 23-year period. And, again, proposed land uses are identified, primarily mixed use, you know, given the transit-oriented nature as well as the downtown nature of the area. Again, this is a little more detail as it relates to the budget. From the TIF plan, important thing to note about this is the village does have the ability, based on real life, based upon the market, to reallocate those items as needed, the key is really the bottom line, the 17-5. Any increase over that beyond the limitations set forth by the TIF Act would require an amendment to the plan in going back to the taxing districts. So, again, the budget is a working document, so to speak. It's meant to be somewhat broad, and it does allow for the village to respond to any changes in a marketplace. From the standpoint of input from the other taxing districts, they do have the ability, similar to your other TIFs, to meet once a year, to review the audited financial statements, to review an annual report. This report's not only filed with the districts, but also with the State of Illinois, the Controller's Office. So, again, you know, the TIF plan, not in a vacuum, you know, builds upon, is designed to build upon other efforts that the village has undertaken, and it would primarily serve as a financing tool to allow you to implement activities that are important for the redevelopment of the downtown area. Where we are now is near the, so to speak, you know, the plan has been on file for over 60 days. There were a couple meetings with the Joint Review Board in terms of the other taxing districts' notices. The village has complied with all requirements of the notices, not only to the taxing districts and to the state, but also residential addresses within 750 feet. Taxpayers are record within the area. We're also notified, and Jim indicated, the two newspaper notices that were published in a newspaper the village normally uses for such matters, so. But that, that would conclude our presentation, and, again, we'd be happy to answer any questions if we...
Yeah, thank you. First off, before we let you leave the podium there, does the board have any questions for this gentleman?
Wait.
Great, none, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will open it up in an orderly fashion to...
Let's first ask if there's any written objections they want to submit.
Any written objections that would like to be submitted at this point can be submitted to the Clerk. I know one's already been submitted. I know some have been published.
Okay.
All right, we'll open it up to comments.
Do I identify myself for any of that? Okay. My name is Bruce Saffron, and my wife, Jan, is here. We're residents at 316 Oakbrook Court in Bartlett, and we are owners of Banbury Fair at 211 Railroad Avenue in beautiful downtown Bartlett. You know, I had a couple of people ask me, "Why are you doing this?" That seems like people's minds are made up, and so I'm hoping people's minds are not made up, and that we have an open view. And I'm so glad to see other businesses and property owners here tonight to voice another view, other than the one that's been in our local newspaper. When my wife and I came to Bartlett in 1980 and built our home in Bartlett, we were attracted to Bartlett by the standard of excellence in the village. We saw streets, we saw police protection, park district, library, fire department. There was excellence in this community, and that's why we came to this community and are very glad to have lived here in this community for over 30 years. And I'm glad to see that standard of excellence has been sustained in all these areas of our community. And I do know that over the years, that many of the different taxing bodies, in order to sustain a level of excellence, have had to have tax increases in order to buy new properties or build new facilities, and we've supported all of those because we want excellence in our community. The downtown district is a part of our community, and the plight of the downtowns and small business throughout the United States, Illinois, is in dire condition. That's no news to anybody. Go through any downtown district anywhere, and you'll see it basically in a state of decline. The State of Illinois has come up with this TIF program as a way to help reverse that trend, and the Village of Bartlett acted promptly on this back in the day, and I'm glad they did. And as a matter of fact, at the time they did, I had, you know, visions that were significantly different than how it unfolded, but I'm glad it unfolded the way it did because instead of having polluted land and factories that were basically obsolescent, we have a beautiful town center and condominium complex that are generating property tax that everyone is benefiting from. We are, we are, we as a business community, I think, are always encouraged as we see the village's annual reports or annual presentations that always show your priorities. One of those priorities is always to sustain and/or grow the downtown district, and we saw the TIF as giving monies to provide for that sustaining or growth in the downtown. I, you know, I, I know as a, from our standpoint, and I can only talk from our standpoint, most of us in the, in business are in the same basic category, we're underfinanced. When we hit a blow, when we take a blow, either in terms of sales or in terms of, you know, the roof fell in, or in the case of Banbury Fair two years ago, our sewer broke, $17,000 unexpected bill, it's a major blow, and to a lot of businesses, it puts you out or under. The TIF was something that we could rest on, that we could think, "Well, you know, I don't know that I want to put a new roof on, but I, but I know I have the village as a partner in this." And we were categorized as being friendly with the village in the newspaper recently, and I'm very proud to be friendly with the village, and because I think we're a team. I think all of us are a team. We're a team. And so I ask you to have an open mind, and I'll leave you with a little story, a little Banbury Fair story, which is in 2004, we were at a crossroads with our property, a property, the building was built in 1892, and it was taxed so heavily that we didn't know what to do. And so Cook County changed their property tax laws that if you put a residence above and did X, Y, and Z, you could be classified as mixed use. In order to do that, it was $300,000 for us to do that, $300,000. And so when we went to the bank, and the bank came out and looked at our property, the bank said, "Bruce, the smart thing to do would be to tear it down and put it in a parking lot. We can't give you the loan, sorry." And I said to them, I said, "Well, the village has a TIF district, we're in a TIF district here, and we could get $30,000 of that $300,000 if we qualify for TIF." And they said, "Well, because that," plus the other things we had to fork up in order to get the loan, "we'll give you the loan." And so instead of, we wouldn't have made it a parking lot, but whomever we sold it to might have made Banbury Fair, which I think is a building you're, hopefully you're proud of when you drive through the downtown. Instead of seeing that, you could see a parking lot. And I know there are a lot of other properties in the downtown that fall into that same category, that without any help, good luck. So I hope you keep an open mind to this and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saffron.
Good evening, my name's Tony Sanders, I'm the CEO of School District U46, Mayor Wallace, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you this evening, and just to let you know, I know it's not related to the TIF, but today was our last day of school, and we made it, so.
My children know that, too.
Your children do know that? Yeah, mine do, too. I've heard about it, the countdown, the last 30 days.
Yeah.
So, I am here before you this evening to express our board's opposition to the downtown TIF. In May, our board did enter a resolution that you should have in your materials in opposition to the TIF. In addition to that, it was not seated during the public presentation, but the Joint Review Board also entered in a resolution in opposition to the Tax Increment Financing District. Just a few key points from our perspective. Number one, all EAV is declining across all of U46 and most of your taxing districts. So the allegation that EAVs have been declining more substantially than other areas is just not factual. All EAVs are declining. The other reasons why our board entered in an objection, number one is residential properties are included within the TIF, and as a result of that, we could get students, but not the corresponding increase in values of the property. And further, that it overlaps areas of the TIF that were, that just recently expired. I'm glad to answer any questions, but I just wanted to register our opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nianse Pucaro. I'm a co-owner with my husband of V&amp;V Paesano, along with my son, who also runs it now with us. We also own the former Kohler home next door at 370 and South Main Street, and we are in favor of the TIF district because of the regulations to bring the deteriorating structure up to code are too cost prohibitive of the Kohler home. And if you, we've been in business over 33 years now, so it's not like, you know, we're in and out of business, but we want to do something with that property. And we have, our roots are here, we're supportive of Bartlett organizations, we deliver a quality product, and looking for a TIF passage to be able to continue doing so more affordably. Please cast your vote for Bartlett to continue to be a town of progress with pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pucaro.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the board, and staff. My name is David Berry. I'm a resident of Bartlett and also the trustee and the new president of the Bartlett Public Library Board. And I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the TIF district. As you all know, that we passed a resolution against the TIF district and it's been submitted to the, to the board. We're speaking against it because of the... We're speaking against it because of the effects it might have on our ability to serve our patrons over the next twenty-three years. I know there's a lot of people here that want to speak about it. I'm happy to take questions, but I think our fellow residents need a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Hi. My name is Don McClure. I also would like to encourage you to pass the TIF. I am in favor of it. I live in Bartlett, I live at 950 Baytree, and I also have a business that's at 111 Railroad. It's McClure Chiropractic. So, I belong in the TIF district. And I'm not asking, I'm not in favor of this in motivation that I'm going to use it. I'm somewhat like Bruce, I've been helped by this. I bought my building, to tell my story, I bought my building in 2000. And I was twenty-nine years old and a little bit naive on how to start a business. I thought you buy the building and you build it out. And when I did that, my dad and I went in, decided where we were going to put walls, and went over to the village and applied for a permit. And I had one plaster wall that I thought should come down, and I brought that down. And I went over and I met Brian and I met Jim. And they said, "Well, once you expose electric, you have to bring it up to code." So, and my building was built in maybe 1918, 99, somewhere in there. And so, the electric was probably put in maybe 1920. So, I said, "So, do I have to change those couple outlets?" And Brian said, "No." He says, "You have to bring it all up to code." So, which meant then, I had to tear out every wall and ceiling, and I had to plug all the electric, and I had to put in a new panel, and I had to put in, my electric bill alone, I thought my build-out might be somewhere around twenty thousand. I had that budgeted. And I got an estimate for the electric and it was twenty thousand. So, the electric alone was twenty thousand. And the steps need to be redone because they're old steps. And so, I said, "Well, that's next. And in order to put in steps, you have to dig a foundation because that has to be up to code because it's an old building." And so, I got a bid for that. And you also have to make it handicap accessible. So, I had to put it in the elevator. And one thing after another, it went up. And I really, you know, like Bruce describes, I didn't have that in the budget. And so, this TIF was in place. And as I'm sitting, thinking about all this, my neighbor across the street, Mike Kelly, comes over and shakes my hand. He says, "Don, congratulations." And I wasn't necessarily excited about owning this. I saw a lot of work that had to be done. And he said, he pointed down the street, he said, "You see that factory right there?" And it was just a building. He says, "That's going to be the new town center." He says, "That's going to be pulled down and it's going to be landscaped." And right next to me is AT&amp;T, which is still next to me, but it's just a warehouse. So, when I bought my building, it was a lot, it just had grass, and it was sometimes mowed and sometimes not mowed. And sometimes I went and mowed it because it looked like it was maybe my lawn. So, that then is landscaped. And it's beautiful. It's right there. It's a beautiful corner. And it was stop signs. And it was kind of awkward because one way could just come through, but you had to stop in the others. And now, there's streetlights. And you have this town center, which some people say is a failure because we don't have Starbucks, but it's beautiful. It's a beautiful center. And it's changed. I mean, and so, and I also want people to know that when they say "TIF," they didn't pay for me to do this. Like, they didn't write me a check and say, "Don, here's a check for all of your stuff." I had to pay it. And so, and I did. And then, it's a partnership, like Bruce says, it's a partnership. And so, you get a percentage back. It helped me. And, you know, thank God it was there. I didn't even know it was there. And Mike Kelly's the one that told me about it, showed me this and that. And so, I'm thankful. And I'm thankful for the next person that tries that, that it's there for me. There are improvements that I want to do with my building, but it's small things. So, I'm not encouraging a vote yes because I want a TIF. I want to, I want to see this area, you know, get better. The Train Depot, it's one of the last, original on the line. And we preserve that. My favorite picture in my office, my last thing I want to share, my favorite picture in my office, I have a picture, and some other places have this next door, they have this picture. It's a black and white photo, and it's looking up Oak Street, and it can see my building. It can see the Village restaurant, Lucky Jack's in Banbury Fair. And it's a dirt street, and it was taken in 1902. And those buildings are there, and you can see the resilience, you can see the changes. And so, someone needs to come in and rescue Lucky Jack's. That's why I just hope someone can come in. And if this were passed, I think someone might have the courage, like I had the courage, someone might have the courage to say, "Hey, there's a partnership with the village." And so, I would encourage everybody for that. You see that photograph from 1900 and you just realize this downtown area is part of history. So, that's why I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name's Larry Nyberg. I lived on 801 Poppy Lane. I've lived here in Bartlett since 1984. I would echo the same things that Bruce mentioned about why we moved here, the excellence. It was a beautiful community. I was in an industry at the time that gave me a lot of insight into how well the police organization and the fire department was organized, the services that were provided. I'm not a business, I'm not in business, I don't own any property in here. I honestly don't know if I'm in favor of the TIF or if I'm against the TIF. But since 1984, I've attended enough meetings, I've seen this village spend an awful lot of money, do an awful lot of encouragement to improve downtown. And then, what I have seen is we've lost a few businesses, we haven't increased the foot traffic, we haven't increased the vehicle traffic, we got a bunch of fast food restaurants, those aren't going to be bringing in the kind of money that we're looking for to be bringing to upgrade the whole area and make this whole project worthwhile. So, in what little bit I have read, I haven't seen anything that talks about how over the next twenty-three years, spending all this money, encouraging seed money from a lot of businessmen who don't have a whole lot of money available, how that's going to increase the traffic, that's going to drive the business, that's going to increase the revenue, that's going to increase the taxes. I don't know if people are deliberately not talking about that, but I haven't heard very much about it. And that silence, to me, is deafening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nyberg.
Good evening. I'm Michael Warden, 431 South Main Street. I've lived in Bartlett since 1961. It'll soon be fifty-four years. I've seen a lot of positive changes here. I love Bartlett, that's why I'm here tonight. Bartlett in 1961 was only fifteen hundred people. I've seen the village grow. If you were here in the 1960s, Bartlett downtown was a big eyesore. There were a lot of deteriorated buildings that needed to come down, that were fire hazards. We had fuel storage tanks along the tracks that were just an explosion waiting to happen. We had a lot of things going on that just were not pretty. And several years ago, when Fred Jacobson gave a presentation of what Bartlett could look like, people laughed at him and said, "What are you talking about? Are they going to bulldoze Bartlett?" And he said, "Don't you see that these are the buildings that are there now, but you can inhabit them with businesses?" And that's what happened. We have a lot of things going on here. I've been a life member of the Bartlett Historical Society. In 1978, I was eighteen years old, I got on the Bartlett Preservation Area Commission. That was an ill-fated commission that was designed to preserve the downtown district as a historic district, as a B1, so that buildings didn't have to be torn down and people could still run their businesses. It had a lot of flak and badmouthing, just as the TIF district has had. And the village really didn't have the backbone, I don't think, to sustain it. And they let it die. And so, finally, when it got down to two out of five members left, they just resigned because nobody was getting replaced as our terms would expire. In 1979, I was nineteen years old, I got appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I've been on there for thirty-six years. I've stayed on there because I love this town. I want to see the TIF district passed. I want this to continue to be progress with pride. You are elected trustees. You have been elected as trustees of this village to sustain it, to keep it going. One of our most valuable assets is Valerie Selman's, with her expertise in finance. We are one of the most fiscally sound villages around in the nation. We have one of the finest police departments around. It's world-renowned, they do training. And yet, we have a downtown that has been hurting. But if you could have seen it thirty years ago, it is so much more beautiful than it has ever been. And it's not a failure of the village board or businesses that has caused it to stop. We had a horrible event on 9/11/2001, when terrorists struck the country. And the economy has never fully revived since then. For twenty-three years, I have been a revenue collection officer for the Illinois Department of Revenue. I collect taxes. I've covered towns in the six-county area. I have knowledge of what taxes can do. People are hurting there illegally using withholding taxes and sales taxes and other taxes to finance their business because of the economy. We have a wonderful opportunity to not listen to narrow-minded self-interest groups and to do something for the village of Bartlett and to pass this TIF district and to keep businesses afloat. We have successful businesses here. You've heard from Bruce Sufferin, from Banbury Fair, you've heard from Nancy McCarroll, from V&amp;V. We have J.C.'s, we have T.L.s, we have the Savory, we have the Durango Family Dental, businesses that have made it. Sure, some businesses have gone, but let's keep these other businesses from going. If you could have seen what an eyesore, other than cornfields, lay east of Main Street only a few years ago, we had factories and it did nothing to enhance the beauty of Bartlett. And now, because of a town center and a plan and vision by people who were before us, you see what you see now. And I hope this continues. I hope you have the backbone to stand and make it happen. Let's have progress with pride. Let's pass this TIF district. Let's have Bartlett still be an outstanding community in this area and not fall apart because we can't attract businesses. The failures of the past have not been our fault. We've had things beyond our control with the economy. And even the feds are talking about finally increasing interest rates. That's a sign that they see improvement on the horizon. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to nab and take advantage of it and grow again to greatness and have a beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name is Mike Sobel. I own Mark Your Space over on Humbrook Circle. Just to be clear, that's not in the TIF district. I am for the TIF, and I'm for the TIF for many reasons that I won't go into tonight. But what I did want to do is I wanted to share a little bit of information with you guys. I represent the Bartlett Chamber of Commerce on the Economic Development Commission. And many moons ago, we were asked to come up with some ideas on how to help the downtown. And one of the ideas that we came up with was the TIF. And through a long process, it's come to where we are today. I'm glad that we're here today, and I hope that the TIF passes. I don't know about you guys, but if you walk around Brewster Creek and other parts of Bartlett, most of the small business spots are not vacant anymore. They're full. It's hard to find a 2,500-square-foot unit anywhere in Brewster Creek. Go try to find a medium-place space in Brewster Creek. Pretty impossible. Try to find a large one. That used to be easy as pie. Now, people are building. And now, people are building out in Blue Huron and the other industrial park. But guess what area is not growing? Downtown. And why isn't downtown growing? Because it's exorbitantly expensive for somebody to come in and do anything. And nobody, if you have a choice to go open a business and it's going to cost you twenty-five thousand dollars to do your build-out, or you can be downtown and pay twenty-five thousand dollars for that build-out, plus fifteen, ten, twenty-five, a hundred thousand dollars to get up to code, where are you going to choose to locate your business? Your business is going to go where it's cheapest and where it's less expensive and less hassle. Lucky Jack's is a perfect example. You want to tear that place apart and rebuild it into something really new, it's going to cost you a hundred thousand dollars just to put a handicap accessible ramp there. Do you think someone's going to want to locate a business there? No way. They're going to go somewhere else where it's easier. I don't want to see Bartlett's downtown become more, and this is a harsh word, don't take it that way, more blighted than it is. There are areas that aren't well taken care of and maintained well, and a lot of that's due to vacancy and things of that nature. And I think if we don't concentrate on growing that area, that problem is going to persist and increase over time. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Sobel.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name's Steve Vasiliyan. I'm an architect. My business is at 28 South Water Street in Batavia. I'm also a former alderman in the city of Batavia, so I've been on your side of the table discussing the merits of TIF districts and how to administer them and to assess their value. I had three quick points that I wanted to make. First is that not having a TIF district puts you at a distinct disadvantage with other communities. The competition for businesses is fierce. And other municipalities that have TIF districts in their arsenal of incentives have a distinct advantage, and not having one will put you behind. And businesses who are on the fence or making that final decision about whether to come to Bartlett or some other community will go elsewhere. Second is that in regard to some of the comments about the school district, your proposed TIF district is primarily non-residential. So, the proposed, or the impact on the school district is going to be minimal. Whereas, once the TIF district expires, it's going to result in a huge windfall for the school district. Lastly, is that it's a common misconception that TIF districts are, result in free money being given to businesses, and that's simply not true. A TIF district allows for a development to pay for itself over time, that as the property values increase, the property taxes go up, and it's that increase in property taxes that pay back that money. So, it's the business itself that's repaying this money that's being granted toward them. That's it for my comments. I do have them written. May I drop, may I give a copy to the clerk?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Robin Ackerman. I've been in Bartlett for twelve years. I own Balance Family Chiropractic in Westgate Commons, and Steve is my architect. And as we researched what to do with my practice, staying in Bartlett was definitely a key factor. But honestly, I'm a researcher, and there's not a lot of positives because of the high taxes for businesses. Staying in Cook County was like, do we stay in Cook, do we go and do Page? Well, that's a really kind of easy decision, but I love the community feel downtown. So, we made our decision. We're actually about to close on the Boorman Building, which is at 366-368 South Main, next to Still's Bar and Grill. And it's a big project I'm undertaking. We're taking the roof off, we're refacing the front. This hasn't been done very frequently to some of these older buildings, so I'm really excited about it. What this would, I would see is, I see a lot of kids in my practice. I see Bartlett as a kid town. I see us having parades out front, tents out front, jump houses, community events, maybe networking with all our other friends, with all these other businesses where we do events to bring all the kids and community together. The Little League walks right through there. So, with the TIF money, I'm for it because I definitely think the businesses in Bartlett, we stick together. And I think that's really important because when you think about a community, we keep it safe, we keep it lively, and we keep our families happy and healthy. So, yes, I'm doing a renovation, but the extra funds might help me do something more outside, maybe some beautiful landscaping. I see some kind of seating area so that when there are parades, that we can invite our patients and some of our friends to come over and really celebrate the community feel of Bartlett, the safety that we feel in Bartlett. So, I'm excited about the project, and I really hope that you all keep an open mind to keep our businesses flowing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman.
We keep it lively and we keep our families happy and healthy. So yes, I'm doing a renovation, but the extra funds might help me do something more outside, maybe some beautiful landscaping. I see some kind of seating area so that when there are parades, that we can invite our patients and some of our friends to come over and really celebrate the community feel of Bartlett, the safety that we feel in Bartlett. So I'm excited about the project and I really hope that you all keep an open mind to keep our businesses flowing. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. I know you're all doing your best and you're serving us very well. I just wanted to just give my perspective on the TIF. Most of my adult life, I will take exception. I walked in late, so I apologize, but the downtown was termed a blighted area, and I've spent most of my adult life in this blighted area. And I've been very happy there. And I, my hat's off to all the business people here that also have been in this area all their lives and built very nice businesses. What kills, as we all know, what kills the downtown is the taxes, the real estate taxes. That's what does it. There was a, as we know, there was a TIF district here for 25 years. That TIF district did nothing to help the property taxes of the people in the business district. In fact, when I bought my building in 1984, that property, the taxes were about $800 a year. Now they're about $20,000 a year. And that's the result of a TIF district for 25 years. And I'm not blaming the TIF district, but you can see the TIF district did zero good. We know all the problems there was closing out the last TIF district. And everyone here did a yeoman job trying to close it out. But 25 years ago, 15, 20 years ago, we had businesses across the street. We had Setco. We had viable businesses that employed 50, 60 people. Those aren't there anymore. We have empty buildings across the street. So I got to give you my opinion. I really don't think, and spoken as someone who never received a penny from the TIF district and looking at the list in the paper, I think I was one of the few who didn't. Never got a penny. So I just would like to just make it clear from someone who's been here a long, long time, who built the building here and has invested his life here, that I think the TIF district in that area is misplaced and may be fine other places in this town for it, but not here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you for your service.
Art Prashanik, 925 Auburn Lane in Bartlett. I'm here tonight to represent the narrow-minded self-interest group from Bartlett, otherwise known as the taxpayers. Ultimately, it seems like tonight there's been a lot of pitting businesses for or against. And it's not really what people are here about tonight. We all want the businesses to succeed downtown. We probably all use a couple of them, maybe not all of them. But the truth is, there's more people that avoid downtown than are actually coming to it. Okay? Ultimately, the taxpayers are the ones that are going to be paying the most for this because, as has been pointed out by some of the other taxing bodies here, they're not going to get the continued growth from this area. And they're going to have to make that money up from somewhere else. And that's going to come from all of our pockets, the other businesses, the other residences. It's great to have a great downtown, but as has been pointed out here, one of the obvious problems is the taxes, Cook County taxes. It might be better off to hire Mike Madigan as a consultant, drag the downtown into DuPage, and then we might have a better chance of bringing businesses down here. Mike Sobel pointed out too. Our TIF district out in Brewster Creek, it's full. What's the magic secret there? DuPage County. The Cook County side, we have nothing there. Okay? I saw recently Mayor Craig from Hanover Park was part of a business consortium meeting with ex-state Senator Steve Rochenberger. They were looking at ways to change Cook County, change the tax structure, do something like that. I would rather see our resources devoted to something like that right now than to take a chance with this. Now, as said, Brewster Creek is a great success story for TIF districts, at least the DuPage side. But right now, it's not the right thing to do. There's too many unknown possibilities with the state, with what's going down in Springfield, with the other taxing bodies. I would suggest tabling this for now, readdressing it in maybe two years, and at that time, maybe have a better plan to put out to the residents and the businesses, what we're going to do with this, what we're going to expect with it. And have some milestones. We saw the downtown, it did improve, but it nowhere met the expectations that were promised back when it was done. The Examiner's been brutal on the old TIF district too. I don't know how much of that is true or not true. But if a quarter of the stuff is true, that how some of the expenses were done, we need to look at that too. How to get a better handle on how the money is spent and reported because, you know, the one guy said, there's no free money here? I'm sorry, but the people that I hang around with, the $100,000 to Tutus, really? The $50,000 or so that the Bartlett Fire District got that doesn't even pay taxes? That wasn't free money? So ladies and gentlemen, you have a tough decision here, but also the rest of the taxing bodies in this whole area that represent us too, said loudly and clearly, this isn't the time for it. Thank you very much.
Again, Mr. Prashanik.
Well, good evening. My name's Tom Zimmick. My family has been part of Bartlett now for 26 years. My wife Debbie is here also. We own 138 South Oak, which some people say, well, you got it on the market right now. That's a terrible thing to do. We also own the Bartlett Coin Shop. We bought the coin shop 15 years ago with plans of when I retire, to move into the coin shop, do something a little bit less stressful. Three years ago, I had some health issues. And we decided to simplify our life a little bit. We put the building on the market 15 months ago, and we love Bartlett. Bruce has got a great business. We plan on staying here. I plan on working at the coin shop after I sell the building and stay downtown. But the building's been on sale for 15 months. There hasn't been one person that looked at it. The TIF money is needed. We need to do something that's going to revitalize this area. I hear taxes, and homeowners don't want to be stressed with the taxes. I want to share something with you. We purchased the building in 2003. The property taxes for 138 South Oak was $15,400. This year, the property taxes are $32,000. That's asinine. It costs me $300 a month, excuse me, $3,000 a month in property taxes. We've got six tenants over there now. The only way I could get people in there to fill the space is by discounting the space, paying for the utilities for them. We've got six people in the building now. It was so vibrant on Saturday. We had a grand opening for Ion Nutrition. It was pouring rain. It was the crappiest day we could have ever had. There were 50 to 100 people that showed up there, and that made me realize there may be some hope for this downtown area. But when you're paying $32,000 a year in taxes, you just can't survive. I hope that you folks can really look at the TIF district as something that... I put together some rough numbers, and then I'm going to sit down because I could rattle on forever if I have a microphone. But my wife and I, we utilized the TIF district to the tune of a little bit over $10,000 over a 10-year period. And that was the savings that we had. I get so aggravated when I read the Herald, or excuse me, the Examiner, when they had everybody listed in there that the Bartlett Coin Shop, Tom Zimmick received $10,000 in TIF money. They should have put one more column in that paper. During that 10-year period that I received $10,000, I paid a quarter of a million dollars in taxes. Those numbers are stupid. I want to stay down here. I want my family to stay down here. I want to run my business. But all of us here that have our businesses down here, we need some help, and that's what we're here for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmick.
My name is Jim McCarthy, 1175 Independence Drive. I am a 30-year resident. My wife and I have raised our family here. My wife's credit card has been in Banbury more than once. V&amp;V gets our credit card on a regular basis. And before I begin my comments to all the businesses in Bartlett, I appreciate your work. It is not easy to run a small business. I know that very well. Mayor Wallace, members of the board, staff, I do not envy you. Your decision is going to be a difficult one. But that's what you were elected to do, is to make the difficult decisions. With that, I am here this evening to speak in opposition to the proposed downtown TIF. While I see great value in the Brewster Creek TIF, the Route 59 TIF, and others, I am just very uncertain as to the viability and the success of this particular TIF. Every taxing body other than the village will lose revenue, and quite simply, I don't see the value in taking that risk. The Fire District's only source of revenue are tax dollars. We don't get sales tax revenue. We don't get motor fuel tax. We don't have a place other than the tax dollars to raise revenue. As such, I find it very difficult to saddle future trustees and to saddle the residents that are outside of the village of Bartlett, of which make up about 20% of the people who we serve. We are asking them to pull more than their fair share of the load. It's simply not fair. I would ask that you give careful consideration before voting for the proposed TIF. The previous TIF served its purpose, but proposing a second TIF for effectively the same area is just not best business practice. In the future, maybe, but right now, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
My name is Jim Leo. My partner Brett Gaylord, together we own the Still Barn Grill. We came to town in 2014 because we saw an enormous untapped market and a great opportunity. We've heard a lot of great points tonight, and you know, and I could relate to the Cook County tax piece of it, but that's what we have to deal with. We support the TIF, and I'll give you a few reasons why. First of all, we have a barbecue-themed restaurant. So for the people out here who've been to the smoking pit, our pulled pork sandwich is better, and we say it with a lot of confidence.
We won't charge you for that.
What we make is this, we like competition. We get asked a lot, what do you think about this place opening up or that place opening up? For us, it means foot traffic in the downtown area. And that benefits everybody because it's new diners that would go to Bloomingdale, other municipalities, not in the downtown area, and that just helps everybody. We support the TIF because it spreads a wide net over a wide area, and it accelerates the development where we would put something off for five or seven years because we have expansion plans. This gives us an opportunity to do it year one, year two. And if the other businesses think the same way, that's how a TIF benefits a community. So we welcome the TIF. We welcome people staying in the downtown area because it's going to help our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. There's a race.
Myself and my two brothers own Bartlett Plaza. We started Bartlett Plaza in 1977. Two years later, we expanded and we put in another 15,000 square feet. We wanted to, Bartlett was growing. We wanted to expand our shopping center, but at the time, the interest rates were very high. The village came to us, and they said that we're forming a TIF, and we'd like to help you out. We went ahead and borrowed $2 million to put in another 30,000 square feet. We got, right now, we got additional 13 more tenants in the 30,000 square feet. Our biggest problem is trying to pay the taxes, and everybody has brought up the taxes. Since 1995, we paid over $8 million in taxes. The only, we don't mind paying the money. Our problem is our competition and DuPage has certain rents. We have to go ahead and have lower rents in order to make up for the taxes that we pay. And all I want to say is this, nobody brought up an example of what the TIF can do. And this was a TIF, this is what the TIF did for us, and we really appreciate it. And I believe that the same improvement could be done in other parts of Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski.
Good evening, Mayor Wallace, fellow trustees, and all the participants. I heard the last couple minutes about passion in your heart about this community, and I congratulate each and every one of you. But as a trustee of the Bartlett Fire Protection District, I do not speak for the board, but what my experience is, the last two months, what I have witnessed. Back in May 14th, we had the Joint Review Board come together. The school district, library board, Hanover Township, Bartlett Park District, Bartlett Fire Protection District came back together to disqualify qualifications for the TIF. And I will read from the Joint Review Board of the taxing bodies. Excessive vacancies do not exist as Kane McKenna and Associates' report indicates an occupancy rate of greater than 75% within the redevelopment project area overall and an 80% commercial property occupancy. The findings of the Joint Review Board, inadequate utilities do not have not existed in the redevelopment project area. If these conditions did exist, they would have been reasonably addressed in the prior downtown Bartlett TIF district prior to funds being refunded to effective tax jurisdictions. The third point, lack of community planning. Lack of community planning does not exist. The redevelopment project area was developed over the past 25 years with the benefit of tax increment financing, district plan, and financing. The metro station is an asset to the village and was recently renovated with the benefit of extensive planning by the village. The fourth point, deterioration. Detonation of structures and site improvements does not exist. Kane McKenna and Associates' report identified 41% of the buildings in the RPA had either major or minor defects. However, the report did not separate the major from minor defects, thus failing to demonstrate adequate major defects. Additionally, 87% of parcels with the site improvements did not show signs of deterioration per the report. Number five, obsolescence. Obsolescence does not exist. As stated previously, an 80% commercial occupancy rate demonstrates that the area is not in the condition or process of failing into disuse or that structures has become ill-suited for their original use. Additional, if obsolescence had been present, the village would have addressed it during the prior downtown TIF before refunding funds to effective tax jurisdiction. And number six, lag or decline of the EAV. Lag in equalized asset valuation, EAV growth does not exist in the RPA as defined by the statute, having decreased for the last five years at a rate less than the CPI for the last five years. However, it should be noted that similar EAV trends are present throughout the Cook County portion of Bartlett and significant areas throughout the region, and consequently, this criteria may not meet the spirit and legislative intent of a TIF qualifying factors. Based on those qualifications of the TIF, we had five taxing bodies meet in the same room. With these five taxing bodies, they came back to meet with the other trustees and passed a resolution as a joint body and passed it five to one. So I hear the business people here, and I do sympathize with tough economic times. And Bruce, the first table... And Bruce, the first table and kitchen set I bought was at your shop for our first house. But it is a tough business, and we have to shop the areas of downtown Bartlett along with 59 Lake Street. So, thank you, board and people.
Thank you, Mr. Langfeller.
Could he state his name?
Jay Langfeller. And just for the record, Jay, the packet that was put out actually talks about each one of those things, and your side is well noted in the public hearing here, but they also refute the fact that those are false. So in the packet here, it refutes the fact that those are false. Anybody else?
I have a letter that was given to me.
Okay.
By one of the business owners. He'd like me to read it into the record. Do you want to wait? I can wait.
Okay, why don't we let this gentleman go? Thanks for hearing me today, trustees. My name is Bob Perry, and I'm a resident of Bartlett for 20 years. My background, personal background, is a small business owner. I've owned three small businesses and sold three small businesses. I feel I have the background to represent the small businesses that are here in Bartlett. I also am a member of the Economic Development Commission. Why did I vote for the TIF? I voted for the TIF because small business is the heart and soul of America, not just Bartlett. Ask any economist, anyone who does economy, small business is the heart and soul of any town or country. Now, there are developers that are waiting in the wings for this TIF, whether it's going to go through or not. Why do we need developers? Why does any town need developers? To develop new tax money. Business owners are waiting for this money also, to pass the TIF. So any help from outside sources are going to be beneficial to the business owners who make the economy grow and help the village to pay its taxes and to pay its bills. So I support the TIF strongly because it's the right thing to do. Leadership can be defined as doing the right thing in spite of personal and political Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Jim, you're going to read a letter into the record.
The letter is from Edward Kruger, 610 East Turner. He is the owner of Main Street Plaza. My name is Edward Kruger, and for some time, I have owned the southernmost 2/3 of the retail property in downtown Bartlett, commonly known as Main Street Plaza. I am writing simply to ask that in your decision-making process regarding the redevelopment plan and the TIF funds that it would provide to local business and property owners, you consider this perspective of one of those property owners. I rely on rent. I must find tenants to rent the space in my property so I can pay my bills, bills which, amongst other things, include repairs, maintenance, property taxes, and insurance. I work hard to keep my property in good repair regardless of vacancies and shortfalls in rental income. I sweep the sidewalks, cut the grass, patch and paint, and do whatever I can to make the building attractive to businesses and their customers alike. Finding and keeping good tenants depends on the quality and appearance of my property. I am proud of my property and the condition it is in. However, my ability to service my own building is limited. At times, there are major repairs needed to keep the building functioning in a manner worthy of the tenants and their customers. At times, the appearance of the building and the quality of the exterior and the parking lot are in need of expensive repairs and maintenance. At times, it is very difficult to afford the cost of hiring the appropriate contractors to provide the needed repairs, and in recent years, I have experienced a high level of vacancy making it more difficult. I am doing my best to weather the storm of a bad economy as many people are doing. There will be good and prosperous times again, of course. In the meantime, it still rains and snows, and the sun still beats down in the summer, all causing wear and tear. If I am to keep my building in the best condition so that it remains an attractive property during good times and bad, I cannot cut costs while waiting for the economy to get better. All Bartlett property owners must be able to attract business tenants so that Bartlett prospers and its citizens have available the services and retail establishments that make them proud and happy residents. TIF money helps property owners maintain attractive, quality locations, which will attract quality businesses for the citizens of Bartlett to enjoy it. TIF money helps owners afford needed repairs at times when the risks of ownership make it difficult, if not impossible, to afford. Consider the extremely high real estate taxes that burden commercial property owners in this area, especially in Cook County. I must pay my real estate taxes on time regardless of rent shortage or needed repairs and improvements. And regardless of vacancies and rent decreases, property taxes have increased relentlessly in recent years. The property taxes I have paid on my building have averaged 40% of my rental income over the past four years and 38% of my rental income for the past seven years. The taxes I paid in 2014 were 9.5% of the value of my property based on a recent appraisal. These are very high percentages. If the Bartlett community wants to have an attractive, convenient downtown area for shopping with quality retail proprietors, then investment in this area, including TIF, is critical. In the long run, a thriving business community will pay plenty in real estate taxes and sales taxes, making TIF funding a worthwhile investment. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Edward Kruger.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. At this point, we will take any comments from the board. Are we going to address anything at the public hearing?
Don't we have more people?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't notice. Thank you, Trustee Ranky.
Michael Worden. We've had a lot of valid points that have been brought up. In Cook County, the taxes are high on businesses, and DuPage County, they're pretty high on residences. We...I don't think people move to Bartlett because it's advertised for being low taxes. We move here for quality of life. And in the past, we've had controversial decisions thrust upon us. In the late '70s and early '80s, the village board had to come up with a moratorium so that developers wouldn't walk away with the town. And that was a hard decision to make, and it was unpopular, but it proved to be a good one. We had problems with the bail fill. We fought that, and we overcame it. And the decisions that you have to make now are not going to be easy. Some people are not going to like it, but you still need to think about the future and be one of the village boards who took a proactive stance in getting things done. Years ago, when Ellen Meyer was a trustee, she said, "I don't think of the tri-village as Bartlett, Hanover Park, and Streamwood. I think of it as Bartlett, Barrington, and Wayne." And if we continue to let the downtown go, we're never going to see anything like that. We need to have more progress and do it with pride and make sure that Bartlett Downtown gets stabilized. It's already been beautified far more than it ever has been, and it still has more potential. And when we get more growth and get tax breaks and get people in here as the economy improves, I believe that that shall happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Cosio. I reside at 654 Hazelnut Court. When I came here this evening, my intent was not to speak on the TIF. After hearing a number of people speak, I have to be one more citizen who voices their opinion and hopefully can convince you to do the tough job and do the right thing. I'm in favor of the TIF. Why? I believe the TIF could help existing businesses do improvements and build-outs in their existing properties. I also believe that the TIF might help a floundering business stay here in the community, and I think that's very important, that we maintain the businesses that we have. And last but not least, I would like to think that the TIF would be an incentive for new businesses to come and build and do business in Bartlett. Please vote in favor of the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosio.
My name is Scott Thede, 1195 Princeton Drive. I'm having trouble understanding how taxes...cutting taxes on five bodies is going to benefit everybody else. And I'm going to come back to the letter for the Main Street Plaza. I've been here since '78. Back in the '80s and '90s, you couldn't even go there. Village Pizza was so packed every night with Little League teams, it was unbelievable. Bartlett residents, as a consumer, has decided that's not the place to go anymore. So we're supposed to take money from other taxing bodies to help that area when we know that the kids have gone to a small business called Bannerman's out on 59. I want every Bartlett business to succeed, but I also understand that to succeed, you got to have a product that people will pay for and that will give you enough income to pay all your expenses. Bottom line, that's the way it's always been. 37 years, Bartlett Downtown really has not changed that much in 37 years. It's...we've got the train tracks. We seem to forget that that is there. It's been there forever. I'm not sure there is a logical solution, but I do not think we should take money from other taxing bodies to try and improve it. It has to improve on its own. Economics somewhere along the lines has to take care of itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Horwich, and I'm...the last two and a half years, I've been the new owner of beautiful Bartlett Town Center. I know the center's been a bit controversial, but since I took in over-ownership, we have brought in three new tenants, and a fourth is expanding currently. We only lost one tenant since I've taken over, and that was because the tenant wanted to expand and felt like there wasn't enough parking in front of the building to expand, so she went elsewhere in Bartlett. I am in favor of the TIF to further improve the downtown area. In my opinion, as an owner of not just Bartlett Town Center, but other buildings in other downtowns nearby, what this downtown needs, in my opinion, is more traffic. The way you get that is by more and improved businesses, which a TIF can bring in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horwich. Seeing no other people interested in speaking, does the board have any comments?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
One of the speakers indicated that there were developers waiting in the wings. Can staff shed any light on that for us?
Yes. We get calls regularly from people who are interested in either purchasing existing properties and wanting to redevelop existing properties. There are several that are waiting to see the outcome of this TIF district discussion until they make their decision on purchasing properties. We have other people who have...who are not here, who own existing properties, and as kind of in the same vein, that they would like to sell their property to somebody who could possibly redevelop, and those people are waiting until they hear the outcome of the TIF, whether or not they want to purchase it. So that's an accurate statement. I don't want to disclose any names of anybody in the risk of exposing somebody in case the deals don't go through.
Well, one of the things that I'm struggling with is the lack of a plan, and I understand that this is a conservation district, so we're not necessarily talking about, you know, redevelopment situation. But I am concerned about the lack of a plan, and one of the things that residents complain to me most about is, oh, well, let's bring this type of business to downtown, let's bring that type of business downtown. A friend of mine suggested an ice skating rink. And a lot of that stuff sounds wonderful. It sounds like it would work well for us. But the TIF isn't self-executing. We've got to get there somehow. So I would encourage, if we're in a position to do so, I would encourage these developers to come to us, you know, to come tell us what they would do if the TIF passes, because right now, you don't want to disclose anything, and I understand that. I do a tremendous amount of development work, so I understand the behind-the-scenes. But, you know, this is a public body, this is a public decision, and we need that information. So if there are developers out there, I would encourage them to come forward and tell us what's on tap.
Yeah, it's a pretty constant...I would say, I wouldn't say constant, but a steady stream of people that we meet with.
And how do we gauge how serious they are? How do we gauge how feasible they are?
Well, that's a very good question.
Right.
They don't waste time, and I can tell you, in competition with conversations with other mayors, Bloomingdale just passed their TIF, and I've had a conversation with that community, and it's tough. It's tough competition. Did you have anything else?
No.
I have a technical question, and one of the residents brought this up regarding a consortium that I've been privy to, and it's in reference to trying to amass resources to fight the Cook County tax burden. And technically speaking, our TIF funds...is there any type of a part of the TIF legislation that allows you to use that in a consortium with something like that? Marketing?
I mean, the TIF dollars can be used for marketing the downtown area, and they really can't be used to offset the taxes. I mean, you can't take it and use that to pay your taxes, but most of the downtown area in the TIF, in terms of what is anticipated, since it's a conservation TIF, it's doing this, let that conserve and enhance what's there. So I think what your...the plans would be to take some of the existing vacant structures with the owners of those properties and to put those properties back on the tax rolls to help offset some of the decreases in some of the other districts.
The information I've had about that battle is it's a really uphill one to fight the Cook County.
A couple of years ago, I think Rolling Meadows tried this from Cook County, and I don't think they got any.
It's definitely worth it.
Maybe we should hire Mike Manigan.
Yeah, another comment that I had, you know, one of the taxing bodies that spoke this evening continually increases their levy to the max. So whether or not their portion of this tax bill changes or not, we're always going to hit it with the max on that particular tax body, so...anybody else?
I think that's it for now.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Trustee Carbonaro, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the court please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron?
No.
Sorry. Carbonaro?
Yes.
Deanie?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.